One, two.
Could we please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meaning of the Board of Appeals will now come to Art of Roll Call.
Mr. Pacilli?
Present.
Present. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Present.
Present. Mr. Pelton? Present. Mr. Tucker?
Present.
Present. The quorum is present. First matter before the board is Application A 1932. This is the application of Elaine Pinaco, 36 Geneva Street, Revere, requesting a variance of Title 17, 1728, 1728-020, minimum parking requirements to enable the appellant to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on lots 43 and 44 at 36 Geneva Street.
The applicant, please press the microphone and turn it on. State your name and address for the record.
Elaine Pinaco, 65, Joey Road in Revere.
Do you wish to add anything to what you have provided us, or it speaks for itself?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that the house that I purchased was being taxed as a two-family for many, many, many years. I do not have enough room for the additional parking to legalize the second unit. But there are houses on that street that have been turned into two families legally without the parking requirements.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll open up. Is there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members want to speak? Okay. We vote at the end, so we'll continue on with the next calendar item number. There's a motion on the floor to do a vote right now. Roll call.
Question now comes on granting relief to the appellant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. It is granted.
Thank you.
You have to wait the 38th of the city. The city clerk's office is sending you something.
Okay, as far as the permitting, do I reapply online? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
The next application before the board is Application A 1933. This is the application of Amar Chabani, 119 Winthrop Parkway, Revere, requesting parking in the rear yard and minimum width of driveway for two-way travel to enable the appellant to construct a rear yard parking area for four parking spaces on Lot 2 at 119 Winthrop Parkway, Revere.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Lawrence Samione, and I represent Amar Chabani, trustee of the Chabani Family Realty Trust, 119 Winthrop Parkway, Revere, Massachusetts. Seeks a variance in accordance with 40A, Section 10 of the state law, along with Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1752-210. Specifically seeks a relief from Section 1724-070A3, dealing with the prohibition of rear yard parking, and 1728-050, which deals with the width of the driveway. If it's a two-lane driveway, it needed 20 feet. We've provided you in support of this rather complex fact patent, Exhibits 1 through 3 with your application, along with a supplemental exhibit package for you to review. The locus, 119 Winthrop Parkway, is a non-conforming structure. It's located in the RB District. It's 5,700 square feet as to its lot size with 52-foot of frontage. It has an unusual shape, different from some of the areas lots around it. It makes it difficult to create parking in the front yard. It's very sloped, so its topography is at issue as well. The proposal by the applicant seeks approval for rear yard parking. Essentially, he seeks four spaces as set forth in the site plan, identified as Exhibit 1, August 2, 2019. Of the four spaces, three will be for three will be for family parking and one will be a commercial parking space that he will be allowed to have in accordance with the commercial licensing law for spaces, in accordance with Revere Revised Licensing Law, 1032 to 10. The proposal also establishes the use of an 11-foot driveway, which exists at the premises, rather than the 20-foot required by the statute. The background, Mr. Chairman and members, is that my client purchased the property in June 10 of 2005. And in accordance with the site plan, that's the 1996 site plan that I provided you as item number one in the supplemental filing with you, you'll see that the house only had one off-street parking at the time of purchase because of the existence of a set of stairs and a porch on the right-hand side of the structure. So at some point, my client decided that he would like to have additional parking because one was not sufficient to his needs. As a backdrop of this particular property and the issue of rear yard parking, I draw your attention to the fact that this structure was built in 1957 as a one-family, but later, in accordance with Building Permit 7799, on May 16, 1967, was converted to a two-family. My client, as I told you before, purchased it in June of 2005 as a two-family. And he purchased as a two-family, and there was no reason for him not to think it was a two-family, or it wasn't a two-family. I've provided you the assessor's records that establish from 1999 to 2009, 11-year period, that it was assessed as a two-family. The records of the assessors that, in total, established from 1967 to 2010, 43 years, this property was assessed as a two-family. So things began to change. In 2006, my client decides that he would like to remove a set of stairs and a porch so he could park in the rear yard, add additional parking. So he begins the work of removing the stairs and the porch. A building inspector comes and tells him that he needs a permit. He says, "Okay, no problem." The building inspector further says, "Can I look inside your house?" He looks inside the house, and goes downstairs. The building inspector sees the kitchen downstairs and says, "Oh, that kitchen's illegal, and you must remove it." The building inspector clearly never looked at the jacket, never looked at the assessor's records. So my client complied. He just, you know, wasn't going to buck the system. And so he complied, and he removed his kitchen. So in Building Permit 392 on March 20, he removes the kitchen. Building permit is pulled by the building inspector's office, and he removes the kitchen, and he complies. Building Permit 392 is the building permit where he asked to have the authority to remove the stairs and the porch and to have rear access. And that building permit was issued on March 20, 2016. He was doing the work around March 15, 2016, after talking with the building inspector, right up to the building inspector's office, and applied for those two permits. So at the time when he began using the rear yard parking, March 20, 2016, after he properly removed the stairs and the porch, it was legal to have rear yard parking because the Honorable City Council did not vote on 1724-070A3 until March 20, 2016, the evening of the day that the permit was issued, and he began using this particular rear yard parking. I can tell you the ordinance is probably not even effective at that date. I'll leave the former city clerk to correct me, but I believe that was only the night of the vote, based upon what I saw from the clerk's records, and I provided them to you. But also, the mayor, I believe, needs to endorse it to become final. So that leaves us with the driveway. Well, the driveway ordinance, 1728-050, was established in 1997. So clearly, when the building inspector gave him Building Permit 392, allowing him to remove the porch and to create a rear access, he wasn't aware of that particular statute. So I would say if he had known what was going on, he would have said, "You need a variance for that." So it really gets sticky, because as you know, the board knows, my client came here in 2015 to have a couple of dormers put on his home. And he believed at 2015 that he had a single-family home. And so he agreed to a condition that basically said, Condition Number 4 to Application A 1511, that it has to remain a two-family home unless and if he seeks to alter that two-family home, he has to come to the honorable body to make it a two. Both of these items, the fact that the house was improperly asked to remove an illegal apartment, was protected by the statute limitations. I've provided you a copy of the statute limitations. 40A, Section 7 is straightforward. If someone, if the building inspector gives a legal permit, and that person, in reliance on that legal permit, goes and uses it for six years, and no action is taken by the municipality to stop him, then he is protected for the rest of his remaining ownership and use of the property. So 40A, Section 7 applies not only to the two-family status, but also applies conceivably to the driveway issue, because you've got a permit saying you can have a driveway. It's a legal permit, you use it as a driveway, and therefore, he's protected. The reason why I come to you on behalf of my client is to clean the record. At least, if you make a decision saying that he has rear yard parking, then he never has to look back and make all these legal arguments and potentially appeals and so forth. So I'm going to answer any question the board has. I've provided as much information factually and legally that I can provide. And I would ask most respectfully that you grant the variance for rear yard parking and the reduction of the driveway from 20 feet to 11 feet. Thank you.
Now, just for the edification of the public, that's all you're coming for? The two-family status, you'll deal with it another time?
My intention is, clearly, because of the condition and because of our position that I'm going to return to the building inspector's office and do the very best I can resolve it, and if I can't, and probably be before you people on that issue. Thank you.
So we're here just for the driveway width and the four spaces in the back?
That is correct.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Good evening, Counselor.
Julia McKenna, Wardwoodshire Councilor. I just want to say that Amar is a very outstanding citizen of Revere. He does, I think he really does the right thing. If he's asked to do something, he does it. He pulls permits, he goes in front of the body, and he tries to do the right thing. And he's been parking there for 14 years, and there hasn't been a problem until the last couple of years. So I'm in favor of this, and I just wanted to be on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and press the red button. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dustin Harlow. I am the resident of 115 Winthrop Parkway. I live directly next to Amir. I am here to be against the four-spot parking spot because I believe it is a detriment to the public good, and I am directly contrary to the claims made here. For a little bit of background, Amir has already paved his entire rear yard. It already, and he did that in 2017 knowingly and willingly. In fact, the person who constructed it told him he needed a permit. He told me personally that he didn't care and that he could do whatever he wants, and if it comes to this, he'll just hire a lawyer, he'll just make it happen. So to that point, that testimony you just heard, I completely disagree with that. And what did Amir do when he had these four spots in his parking lot? He did it because he wanted to run his livery business in his backyard. And as his neighbor, it was terrible. He had four to six cars parked back there, Cadillac Escalade, employees coming there. And I know he makes an argument about reducing off-street parking, but that's not what happened. His employees would park on the side of the road, and it was constant noise, it was constant honking, it was constant door slamming. It was terrible. In fact, the only reason why he's having trouble right now is because I contacted the city in March of 2019 because I was tired of it. And at the time, I wasn't aware of all these ordinances and laws that had protected the residents of Revere. So, you know, I would like to go against each one of these arguments that he makes. He talks about how this is creating some sort of hardship for him. Amir only has one personal vehicle, it is a white Mercedes sedan. The current driveway, not including the areas of his rear yard, is already sufficient for this. The town of Revere does allow for him to have two vehicles, so he could have his white Mercedes sedan and another livery vehicle if he so chooses. The current driveway there is more than adequate for this space. So the hardship, it doesn't exist. And if he's claiming hardship so he can run his business back there, that's already illegal, so that's not a hardship. And he's also claiming that this would increase the economic value to the city. I completely disagree. I think it destroys the property values of the residency because nobody wants to live next to a parking lot. Nobody wants to listen to these sounds. And then he also says how if relief was granted to him, it would not be a detriment to public good. I completely disagree. The increase in noise, the increase in traffic, and most importantly, this would create a loss in green space. Revere already has an issue with flooding, so completely paving his rear yard absolutely destroys the land's natural ability to absorb this land, to absorb the rainfall from the flooding, from water, from snow. And these were the issues which the Zoning Board of Houston failed to see and what led to those flooding issues. So, and I've already noticed in my own yard that it's being overwhelmed by the rainwater and its flooding itself. Yeah, so, you know, I want to state my case that I do not believe that this is for the good of Revere. It does have an economic effect on Revere, and it's a negative effect. It deteriorates the property values around him, and it destroys the natural ability of the land to absorb the rainfall and increases the risk of flooding in Revere.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members want to speak?
Mr. Samione, does he have a legitimate business address with the city of Revere?
Are you talking about with the city clerk's office, like a business certificate?
Right.
I don't believe his business address is his residence. Is the business address 119? No. It is? Okay, so I take that back. He does have a business address located at 119. He has a home occupation, which is allowed in accordance with the ordinances. The ordinance particularly deal with 1744-000. You can have a home occupation. In his particular case, he has no employees, and he operates off a phone and a computer. As far as the licensing issue of the number of cars he can have there, he's fully aware that he can only have one car by a permit granted by the city clerk for a commercial permit. So once this issue is completed before your honorable body, he will have to go to the city clerk and get that permit. And that will be the only amount of cars, commercial vehicles, he has. Currently, we've gone over this issue. It's one of the issues sometimes you have to resolve, move forward on some of these other issues. He has no other vehicles other than the one commercial vehicle that he'll be allowed by virtue of that permit, Mr. Lopes.
Okay, we'll go on to our next calendar item number. Next application before he'd like to vote on the issues one by one.
Question now is on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
I'm going to vote yes, but I want to note that if this is granted, that only one vehicle is on.
That's our city ordinance. So if he doesn't comply to that, the building inspector could go after him.
Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. The next application before the board is Application A 1934. This is the application of Mohammed Ashour, 20 Elmwood Street, Revere, requesting a number of building stories, variance, to enable the appellant to construct a third-story addition to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on 20 Elmwood Street, Revere.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Carrie Ann Green. I'm here with Corey Rhodes. We're attorneys with D'Ambrosio Brown, which has an office at 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. We represent the applicant, Mr. Ashour, who is owner of 20 Elmwood Street. The applicant previously went to site plan review and received a building permit from the city for his house. He tried to do everything correctly. However, after he completed construction, the city realized that it had erred in not requiring the applicant to seek zoning relief relative to the building being three stories tall. The relief we're requesting is minimal. The building is three stories tall, while the zoning district allows for two and a half stories. The building meets all other dimensional and parking requirements. The applicant has already put in a lot of time and energy into this project. He should not be forced to tear down his house. It needs the board's help to make this right. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and looking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members want to speak? Just to clarify, there was a building permit pulled for this. The error is made by our building department, oversight, I should say. Okay. Do you wish to vote? Roll call.
Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted. The next application before the board is the application of Paulo Mendez, Party Glendale Ave, Peabody, requesting a variance of the side yard to enable the appellant to construct a five-foot-by-five-foot two-story addition to an existing structure at 32 Putnam Road, Revere.
Good afternoon. State your name and address for the record, please.
Paulo Mendez, 40 Glendale Ave, Peabody.
Okay. Just for the clarification of the members and the public, going down Putnam, which is a dead end, it's the second house after Roland. Just because it was, Putnam Road's really weird. Okay. I mean, it speaks for itself pretty much. It's going to roofline, so it's not going over the roofline. It's just squaring off basically for storage. There's no plumbing in that area. You're not cutting in plumbing or anything. It's just basic storage.
Exactly.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I would ask if there's any proponents? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing and I'll close that side of the hearing. The councilor was made aware of all of this, so would you, any members want to speak? Nope. Do you want a roll call? Roll call.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted.
Thank you.
Don't do anything without the notice from the city clerk. Two-minute recess.
The next application before the board is the A 1936, the application of Craig Halyjian, 32 Rockingham Street, Cambridge, requesting a number of variances, minimum area requirements, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, maximum floor area ratio, parking and loading requirements, and minimum screening areas to enable the appellant to construct a three-story, construct three additional stories on the property over the existing retail space to create 42 residential units and to remove the existing warehouse in the rear of the property for parking purposes on lots 78 and 79 at 191 Shirley Avenue, Revere.
Good afternoon. You can do a quick presentation.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, and I apologize for my voice. Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the applicant, Craig Halyjian, relative to this property at 191 Shirley Avenue. This is right on the corner of Shirley Ave and North Shore Road. You might know the 711 that's there. The client is proposing to add three additional stories to the existing structure that's on Shirley Ave. He's going to maintain all the commercial uses on the sidewalk and put in a brand-new building, really a thoughtfully designed building. We have some renderings that I believe were in your packet. We did add some extra copies here, something that he's been working on for a long time. He's worked with the ward councilor really to develop a good proposal for the site. As you probably are well aware, this is steps away from the Revere Beach Tea Station. I mean, less than a block from the tea station. The proposal has been reviewed in detail, and if you'll see in the packet on the last page, there is a rendering to just give you a sense of what we're looking here. Really something that you would probably more likely see in Somerville or in downtown Boston or Cambridge, really bringing that to Shirley Avenue. And I would say Shirley Ave is going to be one of the really sought-after places in the city in the next few years. The property is going to be about 42 units is what the proposal is. That may be reduced some just as they get to building permitting. But there are going to be no three-unit buildings, three-bedroom units in this building. These are substantially all These are substantially all micro-units, studios, and one-bedrooms, and the parking is really going to be dedicated to the residential uses versus the commercial uses, and that's something that we're hearing from the city. We have met with the economic development director to review this proposal. He's had a lot of input in it on it as well and submitted a letter of support to the board, and we are happy to accept the conditions that he's laid out in that letter as well. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to go over it. We think this is a very good proposal for the neighborhood, really gonna increase property values, and did meet with some of the residents in the neighborhood as well back last week and didn't really find any negative comments, so we're really happy to hear that as well. If there are any questions, happy to go over them. Thank you.
You...there is only micros and one-bedrooms, right? No two-bedrooms?
There, I believe, are a few two-bedrooms. I think they're still trying to work out the exact numbers, no more than six.
Is that in the application, though?
I don't recall if it specified the unit types in the application.
Okay, well, seeing that it's a public hearing, I have to continue on. Is there any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Irono Veselsky. I'm the Ward Two Councilor. I live at 53D Home Street, which is right around the corner from this location, and I worked diligently with Mr. Hellegeon on the design of the building and knowing that Shirley Ave is an up-and-coming neighborhood, and a lot is happening, has happened. We just built a veterans' building up in the Hunt Avenue for 30 veterans, veterans-only. It's not affordable housing, but it's for our veterans, and this facility will enhance the neighborhood. It's a beautiful building. He's gonna have quite an ordeal to make it happen, but that's up to him, and there are, you know, some things that he's gonna have to look at architectural-wise and zoning-wise, and I hope that he works with all the neighbors to try and work things out if there are any issues. But we did have a public here...a meeting, a community meeting, on the 10th of December, and which I sent out...I actually passed out over 100 flyers in a one-block radius for all the residents and business owners, and I sent out over 100 emails to the similar type of people that live in the neighborhood. So, it was well advertised. We had actually, I think, seven folks, business owners and neighbors, show up, you know, to look at the plans and see what they were getting into, and I had one neighbor that called me, and we just had a little communication issue on timing, but in general, you know, we're far this. We're looking to make things better. I'm aware of the height value of the building, and it's only 42, 43 feet. I guess the application shows up to 50 feet, which they are allowed, but, you know, everybody knows that I'm very strict in the building codes and what I...my ideals are of Shirley Ave. You know, I just don't want skyrise, skyscrapers, you know, six stories, five stories, and that end of the neighborhood, of Shirley Ave. There's still a neighborhood behind it, and I watch every move that everybody's making. I've dealt with Mr. Russo and his buildings and Arm Construction and their building, and I feel comfortable with this going up. It's a beautiful building, and I hope he can make it work in a reasonable time and reasonable manner. Thank you very much.
Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Jamie Russo, 1040 North Shore Road in Revere. Just to echo pretty much everything that the ward councilor had already said, I'm a director-butter of this project. I know Mr. Hellegeon. He's a top-notch developer, top-notch landlord and operator. If you look at the plan, it looks amazing. I know some people have said Shirley Ave is up-and-coming. I believe it's already there. I think this will be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, and I fully support the project. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
How you doing? My name is Hansi Bledesi, 207 Shirley Ave, formerly Bagel Bendelli. Craig has always been a model neighbor for us. We've always had the greatest experiences with him. I believe anything that he does on Shirley Ave will be great for the community, for everybody. With that being said, though, we are also building up our building, and we just want everything to be fair. So, if he puts the windows on his side, we just wanna put windows on our side. We just want everything to be fair together.
I still have to go on with the public hearing, and then we can speak after that. Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Any members wish to speak? I do have a question or a concern, I should say, 'cause if we're voting on a parking, I would need to know the breakdown of the units, 'cause that's based on giving us a parking variance. How could we give a parking variance without knowing the number of units?
If you give me one moment, let me see if they finalize that. All right, hot off the presses. That'll be 23 parking spaces total. There are 24 studios and 12 one-bedrooms. I think under the ordinance, those are basically considered the same, and then six two-bedrooms.
Okay. Seeing that there's four members here, you have the right to ask for a continuance, 'cause one vote would hurt this, so you do have the right to do that.
I think we're ready to proceed tonight. If you give me one moment to talk to my client?
There's going to be commercial spaces, well, in the front, or no commercial...there is commercial space in the front of it.
On the ground level, yes. All the existing retail space that's on Shirley Ave now will remain. I'm going to knock the L-shaped portion of the building, the warehouse section, down in the back to allow for as much parking as I can put on the property and to facilitate the construction, so that backside's all coming off. And I would like to address the concern about windows that Heinz he raised, and I'd be happy to have my architect work with his architect to mitigate, you know, as far as direct alignment of any windows that might be on my building that he'd like to put on his. So, I'm sure the architects could come up with a scheme that allows ventilation on the rooms, and yet the windows wouldn't have direct view looking from one building to the next. We can do that.
Sure. There's zero parking spaces for commercial?
That's correct.
Yes. I have concern about the two-bedroom part, which we weren't aware of, 'cause I don't believe, and that's why I wanna research, I don't believe that we've given the other applicants who just came in front of us for things down there, two bedrooms. Or did we? No. So, that concerns me as far as the parking variance goes. Okay. Because we did have very tight restrictions, and in all fairness, that, of course, was one of the big things that people were saying, was the parking.
Yeah. It was, I guess, in addressing the community...
If that's not a concern of the ward councilor, then I just...it's...I wasn't aware of that. If you were aware of it, then...
I was, 'cause the plans that I saw, the front page, had the breakdown of the units. I was concerned if there were more, you know, than six two-bedrooms. That didn't concern me that much, if it was, you know, 14, 15, or 16, 'cause I still am concerned about schools and potential, you know, kids, more kids coming in. But most of the TOD that we've had in the neighborhood and on Ocean Avenue that are one-bedroom and two-bedroom, the number of kids is minimal. I know one night, 205 Revere Beach Parkway, the O'Shaughnessy site, only has four kids in there, out of 195 units.
Oh, most of the developments there. I understand that. The research has been done.
And I think that would happen here, 'cause, you know, I have found that a lot of the millennials that are coming in that want to...that have the two bedrooms, you know, a lot of them are...
More roommate situation.
They're teammates. You know, they're not mates, but they want to share a...they share a unit, so that each one gets a bedroom. But I know millennials don't wanna bring kids up in an apartment. So, you know, that's what I've learned over the years and from talking to the people that have moved into the neighborhood between Ocean Ave and Revere Beach Parkway.
Okay, I was just...as long as you're aware of it...
I'm aware that six units and six units don't bother me.
That you're water, and you're giving the blessing.
Mr. Chairman, they don't...the six units don't bother me.
I just was very tough with the other people that come up in front of us, so I'm very...
I understand.
I don't want it to go against someone else.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we originally had them in at 12, and to address Irish concern, we cut them down to six.
Okay.
As a building the size, the architect felt there had to be a few of the twos, so that's why we reduced it from 12 to six.
I'd like to speak to Bob O'Brien regarding his letter, 'cause it doesn't state the units as well, so...
I think that was just a matter of timing, that he wasn't able to get his detailed letter, though. I have been in direct contact with him on the unit makeup. I think something from his perspective, that the number of units that have been built in the area, there have been a lot of studios, there have been a lot of ones, but at some point, I think the city does not necessarily wanna be a city of only studios and one-bedrooms. It should have some ability to have people who have moved to the city and started in a one-bedroom. You know, maybe they get married, they move to a two-bedroom, and soon they're looking for a house in the city. I think there's some transition to do that. If it would please the board, I could actually even check if Bob O'Brien is in to maybe have him come and speak on the proposal.
If he's in, I'd give a three-minute recess to see if he's in. So, three-minute recess, please.
All right.
We are back.
I...we were luckily able to get Mr. O'Brien, the economic development director, get in contact with him and go over the proposal and...
I did speak to him, so as long as he was satisfied, that was my big concern, not having it in the letter. So, he did state that he knew what the unit counts, and he's well aware of that, has no issue with it. So, seeing that there's no other opponent, no proponent, we'll close both of those. Roll call. Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacielli?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, it is granted.
Thank you very much.
The next matter before the board is... Application of Yuman Street Investment LLC to correct a typographical error on decision A 1730 to enable the ZBA to issue a scrivnis affidavit and correction.
Good afternoon, board members. My name's Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. This is a typographical error that came up when building permitting was happening. The architect, it appears, has mistyped the floor area ratio. It got listed on the decision at 1.63. In reality, it was supposed to be 2.63. I do want to assure you that it is the same building, same number of units, not an increase in size in any regard. It just was a typographical error, and we're asking for your help to correct that so we can finalize our financing and construction.
Okay, seeing that the public hearing, is there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing, any opponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing? This is just dedification, 'cause it was 2.63, but seeing that it was printed, they do have to do the correction. Roll call. The question comes on the relief requested to authorize the clerk to issue a scrivnis error affidavit and correction from 1.63 to 2.63. affidavit and correction from 1.63 to 2.63 FAR. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. DeAngelo is absent. Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. Pelton? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted to issue the scrivnis error. One final matter. We have a late application from S. Claus, 1000 North Pole, requesting various temporary variances on December 24, 2019, to enable the appellant to conduct a one-night, non-for-profit delivery service within the city Revere to facilitate the delivery of toys and gifts to various resident locations within the community. To reduce the carbon emissions, the appellant proposes to use non-domesticated animals to conduct a delivery service. The non-domesticated animals respond to the names Dashu, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cooper, Donna, Litson, and Rudolph. Roll call? Motion? All in favor, I. Next meeting will be to call it a chair? Yes.